Good evening. I would like to call to order the April 13th, 2015, Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller is absent. Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Schweller?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have motioned by Mr. Martin to excuse Mr. Schweller, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of the regular city council meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2015. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None, Mayor.
None?
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. I have
one this evening. We have one proclamation that I will read. And this is for Motorcycle Awareness proclamation. This time of year motorcycles are out and about, so it's, everyone needs to be very careful in watching. So here it is. Motorcycle Awareness, April 13th, 2015. Whereas safety is the highest priority for highways and streets of our villages and cities and states, and whereas motorcycle riders, riding is a popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across the state and millions across the nation, and whereas, in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness, and whereas, all motorcycle organization, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our state should join Abate of Ohio, Inc., and the Motorcycle Ohio Program in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorists awareness, and whereas, during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout the state of Ohio. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook supports and recognizes the month of May, 2015, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. So, we will send that to the group. And that is all I have for mayor's announcements and special guests this evening. Next is introduction of ordinances. First, ordinance number 2015-3. Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Ordinance number 2015-3, an ordinance amending Chapter 1226 Erosion Control Sediment Abatement and Stormwater Management of the Belbrook Municipal Code to ensure compliance with state and national standards. Whereas, the Belbrook Municipal Code includes Chapter 1226 Erosion Control Sediment Abatement and Stormwater Management establishing standards, principles, and procedures for the regulation of construction and development-related earth disturbing activities that cause or may cause adverse water resource impacts resulting from stormwater runoff and soil erosion, and whereas, Chapter 1226 has been reviewed by staff and amendments are needed to ensure compliance with state and national standards. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendments to Chapter 1226 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike through, and strike through in addition shown by italics and underlined. There's about five pages of changes to Section 1226-03, 07. And Section 2 of the ordinance, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Yes, this is just the introduction of this ordinance. The public hearing will be at the next meeting. But this, this is probably one of the sections of the code that changes most frequently based on state and federal regulations. So, we review this on a regular basis and make sure that we keep compliant with the ever-changing laws. The last time this was modified was in November of 2013. So really, there's two sections that are proposed for changes. The one is 1226-03 that talks about illicit discharges and how complaints are handled, how the elimination of the illicit discharges are handled, and the enforcement and penalties for those. And then 1226.07 talks about the construction and post-construction and who is responsible for the inspections and the maintenance of those type of things. So, this, as I said, will be introduced for a public hearing to be held at the next meeting. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mark, is this addressing the retention ponds, maintenance, or anything?
Yes. That second, that second section of it talks about how the, who is responsible for those after they've been constructed, but sometimes before they're turned over to a homeowners' association. So there's that period of time where the developer may be responsible for those, and then they're responsible for the continued inspection and maintenance of those retention ponds during that time before it gets turned over to the homeowners' association.
Is that something the city can fix it and lean them?
Um, we, I don't know if we have that ability to do that, to fix it and lean them, but we, at some point, particularly as those, as these mature and let's say a homeowners' association ceases to exist, we may be dealing with that type of thing going forward, in which case it becomes the liability of those property owners. And I would have to look at, to see if we have the leaning authority to, if we do fix it. But we probably do have some ability to go back and charge that to the affected property owner.
Is that something that we need to look into?
Yeah. Yeah. It may, it may exist. I just don't know exactly, but I can look into that a little bit further and see if, if we need, if we don't have that authority that we, we can have that in the future.
Because we touched on that a little bit a few weeks, a few meetings ago, I think.
Right.
And it's fairly new, the retention ponds. I mean, they're not new, but they've...
Well, they're getting to the point that the ones that were new are to the point that they could be having significant issues and certain homeowners' associations deal with them and they handle them fine, but then there's other ones that aren't as vigilant of that and, and may not have the resources to deal with what needs to be done.
And I think another thing, too, is a lot of people don't like to be surprised, you know, if we come up, say, and then a big cost, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
Anything, you start digging in the ground, it gets expensive.
Okay. I will, I will look into that and have a little bit more information the next time.
So this is introduction. Anyone else have any questions today? I'm sure we'll have more when we have a public hearing. Seeing now, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-3?
I move that we introduce ordinance number 2015-3.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to introduce ordinance number 2015-3, amending Chapter 1226 Erosion Control Sediment Abatement and Stormwater Management of the Belbrook Municipal Code to ensure compliance with the state and nation standards. This will set a public hearing for April 21st, 2015.
7th.
7th. Seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more introduction of ordinances this evening. Ordinance number 2015-4. Mrs. Middlestetter.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance to improve the rezoning of 576571 and 79 West Franklin Street from O1 Office Building District to B4 Central Business District. Whereas, the Belbrook Planning Board conducted a public hearing on March 24th, 2015, concerning the request to rezone 576571 and 79 West Franklin Street from O1 Office Building District to B4 Central Business District. And whereas, the rezoning will make the zoning of these four properties consistent with other area properties, and whereas, the planning board voted five to zero to recommend approval of this rezoning request to city council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the rezoning of 576571 and 79 West Franklin Street from O1 Office Building District to B4 Central Business District is hereby approved. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Yes, this is a rezoning request that has gone through the planning board. If you look here on, this is our zoning map, and this purple area is the, is downtown area. And you can see right in the middle here where it says O1, these are the four lots we're talking about. They're the only four lots in this, in the immediate vicinity that are zoned O1 as opposed to B4. The purple is B4, Central Business District. This happened many years ago, and I believe at the time it was a city-initiated rezoning to zone them O1. On those four lots, the two, the two at the eastern end are the library and the library parking lot, and then the next two are, there's two residential houses. One is in decent shape, the other one's in great disrepair there. What this started with is one of those properties recently sold and the, and the new owner contacted us about, you know, what can they do? When it's zoned O1, they could not rebuild a residential home there. They don't have the authority to do that because it's not, you can't put it in O1. By putting it into a B4 district, you can actually rezone, you could, if, if the house were destroyed by fire, you could rebuild the house. If you want a residential purpose, it could go there, but it could, it could also do most of the office things, too. So it doesn't restrict them. It actually gives the property owners much more freedom.
More latitude.
More latitude. More than likely, those two are going to continue to be residential. I don't know that we'd ever have any office. You could have some type of small office. You could have some type of mixed use, I suppose. But really, what this does is allow for the owners to have the most flexibility in their property. Like I said, the one at the farthest west is falling in great disrepair over time. If it were to be demolished, that would be a positive, and regardless of what they put back in there, it would be a good thing. So, all this does is really bring these four lots into compliance with consistency with the rest of the zoning around the downtown area.
Why did they try to rezone it as O1? I mean...
I don't know exactly what the thought was at the time. I don't know if somebody had an idea that they were going to buy those and build something, and so they went ahead and rezoned it to O1. I don't know what the, what the exact history is, but...
Probably 18-story office park or something.
Right, or something like that on those two lots there. So, that's what this is. Planning Board did hold their public hearing and recommended approval. This, again, will be set for a public hearing to be held on April 27th.
Any other questions on council?
Mark, just out of curiosity, I see the one, R1B down on the, down on the other end of the, of the district. Any, any idea of the history behind that?
Uh, no, not specifically. I would have to look at that, but I think it's...
Is that the church or the...?
No, I think this is the church on the corner there. So it's probably just one that didn't get rezoned, and that may have been the owner's choice not to rezon it at the time when everything got zoned to B4. I, I would have to look at the history of that and see what that is.
Just, just curious.
Most of those are residential right now.
They are residential. So, again, when they probably did the overlay or to put the B4 in place, potentially, they could have objected or not wanted that changed. I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions on council?
I'd just like to make a comment. If there is development, I hope there is, that we make sure that the runoff and all that type of thing gets taken care of because of the past. A little bit shoddy in that area.
Right, right. Yeah. No, that is certainly something that we're more aware of probably today than, than we have been, that particularly for anyone that is in the down, downstream area of this, the impacts that that has. And I think that's probably something in general in the city I think we're much more aware of today than we, than we ever have been in the past.
Because even though that's on the hill, you know, a lot of those lots there, they accumulate a lot of water because there's just nowhere to go, because there's no drainage system even on the main road.
Right. Yes, that is something that we're certainly aware of depending on if, if something evolves there. Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing now, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-4?
Yes, Mayor, I move to introduce resolution number 2015-4.
May I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to introduce ordinance number 2015-4, approving the rezoning of 576571 and 79 West Franklin Street from O1 Central Business District. Public hearing will be held on April 27th. Seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, adoption of resolutions. Resolution 2015-K. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-K, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Green County Engineers' Office for the collective paving program for 2015. Excuse me. Whereas, the city of Belbrook desires to participate with the Green County Engineer in a competitive bid contract for the collective paving program for 2015 as bid by the Green County Engineer. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to sign the attached agreement with the Green County Engineers' Office. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon adoption.
Yes, this is allowing me to enter into a contract with the Green County Engineers. They have done our bidding on our street paving program again for 2015. The streets that we are planning to do in 2015 are Beryl Drive, Gary Drive, and the northern portion of Bloodsoe Drive. We're going to do the entirety of Washington Mill Road that's in the city, and then West Franklin Street from the Little Sugar Creek intersection west to just past where they did the new connections for the vineyards. There's a section there. There's a part of it that wasn't redone when they did the Little Sugar Creek intersection. We're just going to redo that entire section. So the total bid amount for that project came in at 142, just about $142,000. Of that, $11,000 will be reimbursed by Green County because a portion of Washington Mill Road on the eastern side of it is actually in the township, not in the city. So, and it's the responsibility of the Green County Engineer. So we're going to include that in our cost because most of the roads are, but they'll reimburse us for that portion. So the net cost to the city will be about $130,000, and we have $150,000 budgeted. So, we came in under budget, which is a good thing for once to do that on those. These numbers tend to creep up a little bit, so we, we actually came in under what we were proposing to do this year.
Any questions on council?
I notice you're having that wall replaced next to the San Sushi. That's not going to interfere with that, is it?
No, no, no. That'll be a separate project. They are going to do that. We have a contract. They're going to wait until after the Sugar Maple Festival. There, if you, as you go along the bike path there, there's a retaining wall that you wouldn't see unless you were on the bike path there that is over, it's made of concrete over the years with the salt and things like that. It's begun to deteriorate, and we're just going to have that replaced. But no, it shouldn't, they should be able to do most of their work from down along there. And actually, the, the retaining wall should be done before they ever come back and do the paving. This will probably be a mid-to-late summer project by the time they come to do the paving.
Great. Any other questions?
Well, so will 725 be shut down? That'll be after school, right? School will be...
It'll be, school will be out. It won't be closed completely. Even, they'll maintain traffic. It'll be, you know, probably have it down to one lane.
One lane.
And flag and stuff like that while they do it, but just for a short period of time.
Okay.
May I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-K?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2015-K.
May I have a second?
I'll second. A motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt resolution number 2015-K, authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Green County Engineers' Office for the collective paving program for 2015. Seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, resolution, resolution 2015-L. Mrs. Middlestetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-L, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a water service area agreement with the Green County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, the city of Belbrook City and the Green County Board of Commissioners, County, entered into an agreement on April 11th, 1995, to coordinate the delivery of public water supply in Sugar Creek Township. And whereas, this agreement expires on April 11th, 2015, and whereas, the city and county wish to approve a new agreement. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached water service area agreement with the Green County Board of Commissioners. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes. We've talked about this quite a bit here over the past several months, but back in late September, early October, council gave the county six-months notification to have, and terminate the existing agreement effective a couple days ago. Through the results of numerous negotiations, we've come up with a new agreement. Really, the only difference is, the only big differences between this and the old agreement are, the water service area has been amended, and primarily, it's the area that's behind the Staples and Walmart up there. That entire parcel is now on the Belbrook Water System, or that's in our service area. To the western half of that would have been in the Green County service area. So, to trade off for that, we have agreed to pay $1,300 for each tap-in that occurs in that area. There's another area along Clyo Road, just to the north and south of the extension of Possum Run Road where it hits Clyo. Those two parcels are in the city of Centerville, but we will be providing water to those areas. There'll be, there's a separate agreement, a memorandum that will state because that, that has all kinds of annexation implications about who provides the service. But the water only makes sense on the south and east side of Clyo Road is all our water and everything. On the other side will be provided by Green County. So, this agreement, again, just incorporates everything that we talked about before. It was easier to make a new agreement than to amend again for the fourth or fifth time the existing one, or the other one that had expired. So with this, I will, with council's authorization, I will sign this, will forward this to Green County. They will have to take their legislative action to also get this approved, and then we'll have a new service agreement whenever that happens.
There's no issue with having a gap of a couple days?
Technically, somebody, if somebody came in and wanted either one of us to service that property, anyone could at this point because there's no agreement in place saying that we can't. But I don't think either of us...
We already have an agreement.
Right. It doesn't matter. Yes. We, just in good faith, I don't think either party would, would do that. But I suppose, as long as there's not an agreement, something like that could happen. But there's nothing really pending up there right now, so I can't imagine that that would happen.
Mark, what's the status of discussions with Centerville? You talked about a separate agreement for that, the other area there, the small area.
There's a, there's a memorandum that the county sanitary engineer has put together because in the original annexation paperwork, Centerville filed, one of the things they have to do is who's going to provide service. And in their documentation, it said that the Green County Sanitary Engineer would provide water for the, for the entire parcel. Well, now that's not going to be the case. So we have to have some type of memorandum stating that, probably more for legal purposes, if it weren't for this being an annexation that is still in the heat of...
Contested.
Yeah, being contested, maybe it wouldn't matter. But it's just, just making sure that all, that it doesn't get challenged legally somewhere down the road. It doesn't, it doesn't make any logical sense not to do it this way because Green County would have to bore under the road to provide water to it when our water lines are already running through it. But it's just more of a legal issue to make sure that everyone agrees and that no one can challenge a portion of the annexation based on the semantics of who's providing water.
Okay. And we don't, I mean, do you envision having to have the same type of agreement with Centerville where there's a payment per tap or anything like that?
No, no. This, this should just be, all this is really doing is stating that we're going to be the providers of water in that area. And Centerville doesn't, they can't provide water. So it's either us or Green County. So they're, they don't have the option to do it any other way.
So it's, it's clarifying reality.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly what it is.
And it still is in Green County, so.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I enjoyed reading that legal description.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was interesting, to say the least.
So, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-L?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2015-L.
I'll second.
A motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to approve resolution number 2015-L, authorizing the city manager to execute a water service area agreement with the Green County Board of Commissioners, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Four down, two to go. Resolution 2015-M. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-M, a resolution declaring specific equipment no longer needed by the city of Belbrook as surplus property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said surplus property. Whereas, the city of Belbrook desires to maintain adequate equipment to be used by its personnel, and whereas, equipment no longer needed for use by city personnel may be declared as surplus property per Chapter 230 of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the following equipment is hereby declared as surplus property, a 2007 Ford Crown Victoria serial number 2FAHP71W57X149693. Section 2, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to dispose of said property in accordance with Chapter 230 of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, earlier this year, council authorized a new unmarked vehicle for the chief of police. He has received that vehicle, so he will no longer be driving around in a 2007 former cruiser Crown Victoria. So, we received that just last week, and he's very, very happy with the new vehicle.
Yes, he is.
And this one has obviously seen its better day, and we're going to, we'll put it on auction. We'll probably get a couple thousand dollars for it. But we'll, we'll get rid of this one, and he'll be much more comfortable in his new, new vehicle.
There you go.
He kind of, he had that Uncle Buck look.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
So you happen to know how many miles this one had?
I was wondering, I don't know. I know it had over 100-plus thousand miles on it when we took it out of service as a cruiser. And then the other thing is, they, not only do they have miles, but they have all the engine hours on it. That's, that's what really drives these. So I, I don't, in fact, now that you say that, I do, the odometer quit working on it.
We don't really know.
I remember seeing that in the annual report. The odometer quit working on it. So, yeah.
So if someone has a teenage driver looking for a good car, this might be the...
Well, yeah.
Wouldn't be very popular parents.
Yeah.
Female can.
Any other questions? Seeing now, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-M?
I'll make a motion to adapt, adopt resolution number 2015-M.
May I have a second?
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Edwards to approve resolution number 2015 and declaring specific equipment no longer needed by the city of Belbrook as surplus property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said surplus property. Seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, resolution 2015-N. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. 2015-N, a resolution accepting the bid submitted by GM Pipeline, Inc., for the North Main Water Main Improvements Project and to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract in connection therewith. Whereas, the city of Belbrook advertised for bidders in the North Main Water Main Improvements Project according to specifications prepared by the city's engineer, and whereas, GM Pipeline, Inc., was the lowest and best bidder for the project. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves: Section 1, that the bid submitted by GM Pipeline, Inc., for the North Main Water Main Improvements Project with a bid price of $503,482.76 is hereby accepted. Section 2, that the city manager is hereby authorized to do all things necessary to execute a contract with GM Pipeline, Inc., as stated above. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, we recently received bids for this project. There were a total of four bids received. The lowest and best bid was from GM Pipeline for just under $504,000. This number is about $70,000 higher than what we had done in the grant, original grant application three or four years ago when we got the funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission, mainly because we are, we have chosen to resurface the entire portion of North Main Street from Franklin all the way to the North Corporation Limits instead of just the project boundaries. So we'll have that whole thing resurfaced. And then we are adding just a small bit of additional water main to stub out to where Upper Hillside comes in, so that in the future, if we are able to replace those water mains in there, we don't have to dig into the new pavement to connect to the, to the water main. So, those two things ran the cost up a little bit, but this is still within our engineers' estimate for the project. And the, and the two biggest benefits that I see, and probably drove up the cost a little bit, but I think it's worth it, is they're not going to close the road. They'll maintain traffic. They'll be down to one lane at times, and they'll have to flag traffic, but it won't be closed, which is, is big. And it'll be done per the contract during the summer while school is out. So, they can't start until school is done for the year, and they are to be completed by August 18th, which is when... by August 18th, which is when school starts back up. There's only a, a portion of it that's on North Main Street, the rest of it goes through the, the alleys and the plaza and stuff like that, but we wanted to make this as compact of a timeframe as possible. Even if it's not on closing the road in North Main Street, it's going to impact the businesses through the plaza there and things like that. So, we have a meeting, assuming approval of this resolution with the contractor on Thursday to talk about those things, make sure they understand what our expectations are and what they're gonna have to deal with along the way, but we think, we've had, we've checked several of their references, had nothing but good, good reviews, so we anticipate this going as planned.
Is there an opportunity for the businesses to find out about what's gonna happen when and that sort of thing?
Once we get a little bit more, we have talked with Brian Coe, who owns the plaza, even before we went to bid, he is aware of this project and what's going on. Now that we have, we'll have a contractor in place, we'll, we'll allow for that more because there's individual business owners, even though they don't own the property, that will be impacted by this, so we'll make sure that we let everyone know what, what's going on, once we have a little better feel from the contractor, what their, what their schedule is, which end they're gonna start on, I mean, they, either way, things like that, then we'll be able to communicate a little bit more with them.
How is that going to affect the pavement in the plaza? Because I never have been clear on what part of that is alleyway or street or-
I mean, where they, where they go through and run the water line, we're going to replace, obviously, and resurface that, but the rest of the parking lot is the responsibility of the property owners.
The property owner, but, so, it's kind of an odd situation then, that an alleyway, because I, I understand that there is an alleyway designated through there-
Yes, there is.
But it is also a private parking lot, so.
For all intents and purposes, the city has abandoned the alleyway along the way. We don't use it as an alley anymore, but, but that's how we have the right to go and do this work in that, without having to get separate easements and things of that nature. If that were the case, we would have probably gone all the way down Main Street and then gone down Franklin Street because we have the right away for that, but because we still have the existing alleyway, we can do that without disrupting more traffic than we would have to otherwise.
Okay.
I mean, nobody can build on that or put a structure, even if they did, you have the right to tear it down.
Right, but we allow them to use it for parking and things of that nature, but yeah, they couldn't, they could not, it's not their property to put a permanent structure on.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the city, the city owns that like we own the street.
Right.
They just choose not to use it as a quote "active alley."
Right.
Yeah.
And there's numerous going north, south, and east, west, that you wouldn't know where an alley just, when, just to the west of the funeral home, even though it's grass, that's an alleyway, that's where we're going through along there too. You can see the alley on the south side, and it's just a continuation of that same alley that would go up there.
Will the work be staggered in the, in the plaza? Does it all get done at once?
Staggered in terms of they can only do, I mean, they, they're running a new water line, so, so it's not like they're tearing out anything existing, so they're just going, they can only do-
So much.
So much, and then that's what we need to talk with them about, okay, if you do so much and you refill it, they can either put plates over it until the, the concrete is cured, whatever it is, so that people can still use it to the extent, but they can only go as fast as, I, I don't think, our intent is not to have them dig the entire trench-
Right.
And leave it open, and then come back and put water main in as they go, it's really as, you know, dig, dig as much as they can do, put the water main in, do what they need to do, and then pick up the next day going forward.
Okay.
Mark, you had mentioned there were four bids. What was the range of the bids?
Uh, so there was this one at 503, there was one that was about 540, there was one at about 570, and there was one at about $700,000.
Wow, big, big difference.
Yeah, I did, and that's a contractor we've used in the past, so they obviously either didn't need the work or didn't want the work, whatever it is, but, so, there were, there were three of them that were bunched fairly close together, within 10, 10 to 15% of each other.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on council?
Would it be something to think about if some of the businesses maybe can find some alternate parking or something? If it, I know there's some of those businesses get a lot of cars, especially in the evening.
And my, and my hope would be that in the evening, that they would be able to, you, they would still be able to park where they needed to park in that, if they were able to put plates over it or whatever, that, that's some of what we have to deal with the contractor on, so, yeah, we're trying to do it to have, cause as least disruption as possible. In there, you have the, the Blueberry Cafe, which has a lot of obviously morning traffic and things of that nature, and then you've got the Dairy Shed and some of those things that are gonna have the evening traffic, so they're, you know, and then the Bellhop Cafe also has, it's really gonna probably impact that, them as much because it's gonna come down Northwest Street in front of them, and then it's gonna go down the alley on the other side, so.
Could they maybe use some of the city parking there?
Yeah, we could, we'll, we'll make whatever arrangements, particularly over by the service garage for, like the Bellhop, they, they could, they could do that, and, and we could have our employees park somewhere else, at least in the short term. Like I said, hopefully, it's not gonna infect, affect any one of them for an extended period of time, it's gonna affect all of them for a short period of time, but not any one of them for an extended period of time.
I was recently talking with some people across from the cornerstone, some of the businesses I frequent sometimes, and they said they've been hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, you know.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a mess to get in and out of.
Of course, that's a lot bigger mess.
Right, but it's, it's the same type of thing, but yeah, so, one of the, the biggest thing with this is trying to make sure that we work with the, the contractor to, to make them understand that you're going through a, yes, it's an alley, but it's, it's really these businesses parking and everything else.
Right.
Fortunately, there's so many different ways to get in and out of there.
Yeah.
You know, as long as, and it may take some signage and things like that, but as long as we can do something to get people in and out, and get them back out to Franklin Street, then we should be fine.
Agreed.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution 2015-N?
Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution to adopt resolution 2015-N.
May I have a second?
A second. A motion by Mr. Martin to approve resolution number 2015-N, accepting the bid submitted by GM Pipeline, Inc. for the North Main Water Main Improvements Project and to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract in connection therewith. Seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Bear?
Yes. Moving on, we have a city manager's report this evening.
Yes, a couple items. The Treasurer of State, Josh Mendel, has sent out a letter, and I know all the elected officials received a copy of this, and we did too, and I, there was an article in the newspaper last week at some point about their online checkbook that the Treasurer of State has done. You can basically search any check that the state of Ohio has written, you can see what it is, that type of thing. They're offering a similar service to all the local governments in the state of Ohio at no cost to, to do that. So, basically, they've sent out a questionnaire asking if, if we'd be interested. I know in the article, Mr. Tiffany from Sugar Creek Township was quoted as saying that they are going to implement this. I have my own opinions on this, I mean, this is, this is something, that's a lot of detail that can be misconstrued if you don't know the context of why you're writing a check to ABC Company, but it may be the way of the future, and that's the way we're gonna deal with it, so I guess the question, I know we've talked about some transparency things in the past, about, I feel we're pretty transparent with the budget and the financial reports and the things that we put online. Is this something that you'd like me to pursue, hold off for the time being, get some more information? That's, you don't necessarily have to answer tonight, but it's just something to consider, you can sort of see, I've not actually gone on to the Ohio checkbook online, so I don't know exactly what it looks like, and what they don't give you is, what format do they need the data in? They don't tell you what data they're looking for, you sort of have to respond and get their information to find out what they are. What I don't want it to be is something where we have to do more work to submit this data, and it, and it creates something, or we gotta pay our vendor to create a report to get that, that information up there, so.
You know, my, my put would be, maybe let's take a wait-and-see approach. The reason I say that is, I feel like we, you know, as, as a body are very transparent. I mean, with all of our minutes, every resolution we pass, every amount that we pass is already on our website, so I, so I think someone interested in Bell Brook has plenty of information at their fingertips to go get what they want. And I'm like you, you know, really without understanding what the context is gonna be or how this is gonna be done, you know, no, no cost to you, there's nothing that's free. It's just a matter of, you know, it, it's gonna be paid for, it might, it might not come out of our budget directly, but indirectly in the end it probably will.
Yep, yep, and by saying yes, we're interested, I mean, what does that-
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that means we're committed to it, or-
They're gonna ask us to pay our share?
Yeah, yeah, and I know, speaking with some other communities, some, some have a significant number of public records requests where they're looking to do something like this because it actually will save them time, because if it's out there online, they have a, a common way to do it, they can just refer people to this website to do that. I've never had anyone ask for a specific check detail or anything like that, other than the auditors that wanna see that information, that, that asked for that. We'd certainly comply with that if, if they did.
That information is available to general public anyway.
Yes, absolutely.
They just have to ask for it, we get them whatever they want it to say.
If they wanted something specific, we would, we would track it down, so.
It just seems like overkill to me, so I, I agree to hold off and-
Okay, I'll, I'll see where this goes and, and see if we hear anything else, but just wanted to bring that up to you. Second, the newsletter was mailed here recently, so everyone should have received that in their home. The biggest item in the newsletter talks about the Sugar Maple Festival coming up here in a couple weeks, April 24th through 26th. If you need any information on that, the newsletter has all the schedules and the events that are going on during the Sugar Maple Festival, it has lots of other things too, but that's a good resource if you have any questions about the Sugar Maple Festival. I put, I distributed out to you a copy of a rebranding proposal. We've talked about a new city logo and different options we have for that, I, I put a copy for each of you. I just received this today from a, a firm that's here locally, that Elaine Mittelstetter had recommended me to get in contact with. I guess what I would like, not to necessarily review this proposal tonight, but either one, have a subcommittee of council, like the Community Affairs Subcommittee, to review this and talk about this in the future, or do a work session in the future, talk about this and decide how we wanna pursue this or where we wanna go with this.
Council, do you wanna all be involved, or do you wanna have the committee do it? Do it either way?
I think we should all be involved.
Okay.
It's a big enough thing.
Yeah, work session.
It's something to be lasting for a long time.
I mean, it's-
Yes, and that's-
Okay, it's gonna be forever, so, or not forever, for a long time.
A long time.
Hopefully, a long time.
Yes, hopefully, we won't be doing it again, yes. Well, I think I had, I don't know if it'll be the next one, we'll, we'll have a, a work session then at some point to talk about this, maybe it'll, we'll just have it before the next one, so we can talk about the value of what this is and, and sort of the, the complete proposal, and I know Elaine can sort of give us some insight from her professional knowledge of this too, in terms of what some of these different items are, but you now have the proposal to look at, and then we'll talk about it again at a, at a future meeting.
Okay.
And then finally, in, in my memo, I put out the summer meeting schedule, at least the proposed, so just look at that, if you have any conflicts, if you're gonna be on vacation, the dates I put on there are when the meetings would regularly fall. We can, if need be, shift them to a different Monday if there's not gonna be somebody available for some of those, so I just put those out there, so if you have any conflicts or vacation scheduled, let Carrie or myself know, and then we'll, we'll finalize this as we go forward, but I just wanted to get it out there now, so that everyone could see what it is.
The 10th, Donna, that is the Foundation, Green Foundation Golf Outing, so I don't know if you're gonna be involved this year, hopefully you are.
Yeah, I think so.
So, that will be an issue for both of us for August 10th.
August 10th.
So, you guys would not be done by seven?
No.
Oh, okay.
It goes till about 10 or 11. Yeah, 10 or 11.
So, could we move it maybe to the 17th?
We could, we could either move it to the 17th, or we could move it to the 24th, I mean, the 24th, I don't have any conflict with, but we just generally only have one in the month, so.
I don't know yet, so.
Yeah, this, we'll get feedback, I just knew that date stuck out, so, and the Foundation is, I'm on that committee, so.
Just another date.
Yeah, they moved it back because they had a conflict at the club. I believe I'm right.
Okay, well, I need-
It's usually the first week.
It was, this, they had, Country Club in North had an issue.
Well, just let us know if you have any other conflicts, or we can, we can easily change that, so. And that is all I have this evening.
Does anyone on council have any questions for our city manager?
Yes.
Seeing none, we'll go to committee reports. Service?
No report tonight.
Safety?
I just might make a few comments. Being the new chair, I'd like to kinda get started on getting together with maybe the fire police, mark, through, through Mark, or, you know, however you want to do it, and Mr. Martin, Mrs. Mittelstetter's also on the committee.
Okay.
And try to keep the good things going, and with the citizens, make sure that everything's well-covered and-
And that's fine, I-
We got good word, you know, of course, people seem to, it's respect and appreciate our services.
Absolutely, so if, if you wanna have a committee meeting at any time, if you wanna have the police or fire chief come in, we can certainly schedule that, or, historically, we have not done that, that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be done, but I guess, I don't, so I don't know what format we wanna do that, if we just wanna do it, we can easily do it prior to one of these meetings, have a committee meeting where they could come in and give you an update on what's going on, or you could ask questions, things of that nature, however you wanna do it, so.
Does that tell you?
Yeah, I, I like the idea.
Yeah, I mean-
You know, and, and to me, especially with having both chiefs being quote "new", relatively speaking, you know, I, I think that would be a great way to get, get some of their feedback, you know, they, they've been on the job for some period of time now, you know, what's their, what's their feedback, what's their impressions?
Well, we, of course, we got that with their annual report, there was, there was pretty, pretty extensive information there.
I know, they, they're kinda seasoned now, and we're kinda used to them, and we wanna carry on that good public view.
Right, and I think, I don't wanna necessarily overdo it, but at the same time, I know, as Mrs. Mittelstetter said, we had them for the annual report, we had them for the budget, but maybe sometime in, in the middle there, in the, in the time, and then, you know, if they're before you, that way you have the opportunity at least three, four times a year to, you know, they have the opportunity to talk with you, and you have the opportunity to talk with them, so.
I don't wanna be an obstacle, I just wanna be, you know, like a catalyst or whatever.
But you need to be aware of what's going on, if there's anything, so, yeah, I will, we'll, we'll work on something and see if we can come up with something.
Because, you know, you see, we don't see a lot of things in the paper, anything about our police department, but overall, the state has done a lot of investigation due to the things that's happened, especially in the police world.
Yes.
The academies, the training's changed a little bit, you know, things like this. I think we're fine, but it's always nice to kinda discuss some of those things.
Yes.
Is that all you have, Forrest?
That's all we got.
Moving on, community affairs.
The only thing I have is from the museum, the Yellow Brick Road, the pavers are in, they look terrific. They wanted to have them done for the Sugar Maple Festival, and the, excuse me, the ribbon cutting is scheduled for Sunday, May 3rd at 2:00 P.M., so they'll do an official opening. Folks are coming into town who bought bricks for their, in honor of their families, who were longtime Bell Brook people, so it's, it's quite a nice addition to our historic museum, and it provided some funds to do some of the restoration work that needs to be done to keep it in, keep the building in good repair, so.
Wonderful.
Folks, folks are welcome to stop by on the, May 3rd at 2:00 P.M., cut the ribbon.
Great.
All right. There is no finance and audit this evening, since Mr. Schweller's not here, unless someone else on the committee has something.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Nope.
Moving on, any old business to attend to this evening? Any new business? Then that'll move on to open discussion. We will start down at the end with Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. I have something tonight. I'd just like to note the passing of Cindy Luce. Some of you might remember that Cindy was here back in the fall, I believe, creating awareness for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. She was a 37-year resident of the Bellbrook-Shur Creek Community, a community volunteer. She was at the Bellbrook Schools for 20 years. She was the wife of Charlie Luce, a former longtime soccer coach in, in the area of Bellbrook High School. I attended the visitation yesterday, and I have to say that based on the number of friends and coworkers and former players who attended, Cindy and Charlie really touched the lives of a lot of people. So, I'd just like to pass along our condolences to Charlie, his daughters Nikki and Megan, and just let them know that our thoughts are, are with them right now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Boris?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Just come out for the Sugar Maple Festival and enjoy.
Only thing I have is that this is for last year for the commemorative plates, so just wanna make sure that everybody is aware of that. So, if you want a plate, you can mention it. And I heard they're fabulous. I heard they have different diagrams, I guess, of different places in the, in the city, so...
Wonderful. Only thing I would like to say is, one, don't forget the dog show. Dog show is, registration is 6:00, 6:00 o'clock, Friday, April 24th. It's down behind 51 South, which is Shur Creek Elementary School, old Shur Creek Elementary School. So, it's always a fun time. They're gonna have, I think, food and beverages there also. And then I would just like to tag on to Mr. Edwards a little bit. We have a number of people in our community right now fighting cancer. It just seems like, well, one is, I'm probably just getting older and know more people, but there are a number of people that are fighting cancer. So, it's a tough disease, and it takes a real toll on the family. So, I would like to also send my condolences to the Luce family, and also wish good luck, and hopefully, we're gonna eventually someday be able to cure cancer. So, that's all I have. I'm sure Mr. Louis is gonna come out and talk about transportation. I said, I'm sure you're gonna come out and talk about transportation. Or my proclamation about motorcycle safety.
Yes. I'm Louis Schatzberg. I live at 482 Ridge Stop Drive, and one of the things I do wanna thank you for is the proclamation for motorcycle awareness. As y'all know, I do ride a motorcycle, and I did do motorcycle safety course. I belong to the Goldwing Road Riders Association. I'm the chapter director. Up north at the North Ridge Church of the Nazarees, where we meet, my wife and I are the chapter director, and we went down to Wilmington, and they offered a safety course last weekend that we took. Slow maneuverabilities and things that I should practice year-round, but sometimes we let our skills get a little out of hand, and, but we did a lot of practicing on it in the road. And boy, was I tired when I got done. But it's a good thing. I mean, I advise anyone, if they're gonna get a motorcycle, Motorcycle Ohio has a very good basic rider course. For $50, you don't even have to have a motorcycle. Alls you have to do is go get the motorcycle endorsement paperwork, and they'll teach you how to ride the bike, from ground zero on up. You don't have to know anything, and, and they'll teach you how to ride. And I advise anybody that's gonna ride, before you ever go buy a motorcycle, that's what you should do, because it may look easy, but there's a lot of things you gotta watch out for. You know, we had a, a group over in Indiana, they were traveling down a main highway. All of a sudden, a tree fell in front of them. Somebody's tree, they were doing tree trimming way off the road somewhere, and the tree, they got away from them. Next thing you know, these guys, where's this tree coming from? You know, so, I mean, there's a lot of obstacles and things that us motorcycles have to be aware of, as the four-wheel drive and four-wheeler vehicles. So, I wanna thank you for that. The Sugar Maple Festival, transportation, the best way to get to Sugar Maple Festival, park up at the intermediate school and take the shuttle down. You're not gonna park any closer, you're not gonna get there any easier. We have two vans that run nonstop, just come, we just come down, offload, take off, go back up again. And, and we run those through the whole festival, starting Saturday morning. And then, you know, so hopefully, everybody will come downtown and have a good time, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis. Does anyone else on council have anything to come for us this evening?
Nope.
We don't have a big audience this evening, which means there is no one, so I don't think we need to ask for comments or, or concerns there. If seeing there's no more business to come before this council meeting this evening, I call this meeting adjourned.